Call this meeting of the Atwater City Council from March 23, 2020 to order. We're gonna have to read a special COVID-19 statement. Clerk?
It's going to be a government news, Governor Newsom's executive order in 25-20. Members of the City of Atwater City Council or staff may participate in this meeting via a teleconference. In the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, member of the public may submit comments on any item via email, cityinfo@atwater.org on or before 5:00 p.m. on the meeting date, or may submit comments on a comment card prior to the meeting or before the item is read for consideration. Comment cards are available at the front counter.
Pledge of the News tonight by Police Chief Salvador and invocation by Daniel Perez.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you make any further?
Heavenly Father, I thank you for this wonderful opportunity, Lord. I thank you for allowing us to live in a country, Lord, where we can come here publicly and we can voice our concerns and we can get down to business and take care of things, Lord. I'm also thankful that we live in a nation where we can publicly worship you. God, I just ask you just please fill this place with your spirit, Lord, as we can get things handled, God, and please allow the staff here to turn to you for guidance and wisdom. Lord, I also ask that you please be with the people who are affected with this virus that's going around, Lord. Allow them to also turn to you, Lord, and to use wisdom as well, God, as they can stay away, quarantine themselves, and use proper sanitary items that they can use to apply to themselves daily. In Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call?
Ambrose?
Here.
Kale?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Vera?
Here.
Creighton?
Here.
We have a call.
Subsequent need items?
Mayor, there are no subsequent need items.
Yeah, do we have the city manager and city attorney dialed in? So just for everybody's reference, the city manager and city attorney are remote operating tonight so that we can minimize contact with people. So Glenn, do we have them on?
Looks like everyone is joined.
Okay, so I'll need to get him here. Frank, can you hear us?
Yes, Frank, the lawyer is here.
Lori, can you hear us?
Sorry, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of agenda as posted or amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Ambrose?
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consent calendar.
Mayor, I have a question. With some of these items, like with Director Thompson and Director Haddix.
Item four?
Three and four. Neither one of them are gonna be here to speak on it.
Um, I think we're gonna pull four and discuss that separately is what I was gonna recommend.
Okay, go ahead.
And, uh, three, Lori, what did you wanna do on item three?
We have, it's council's discretion on item three. Item four, staff does recommend that we pull, and we do have Public Works Superintendent Madison Holzinger available online as well to answer questions on this item.
Okay, I think we'll pull three also and discuss that.
I'm sorry, this one, item four is, is Community Development Director Greg Thompson, and he's on as well.
Okay, item three, Raymond wanted to pull. I think I could help talk about that, and if I don't give enough info, then, um... What do you wanna do on item three, since Haddix isn't here? I, I think it's pretty clear cut. I just, any questions, I wanna be able to answer those, and I think I've got it on three.
Mayor, this is Madison Holzinger. I'm also available to speak on number three.
Okay, great. So we're gonna pull three and four on the consent calendar. Anything else, council? You wanna read the notice to the public on the consent?
Background information has been provided on all matters listed on the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. Discussion is requested on any item. That item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. So for clarification, we're removing item three and four, or just?
Raymond wants, you wanted to pull three and four?
Three and four, yes.
Three and four.
Perfect, thank you.
So, council motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, who she designated.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Kale, second by Ambrose?
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three, making the environmental finding declaring census metering systems a sole source item and approving a purchase agreement with Golden State Flow Measurement Inc. for the automated meter reading system infrastructure. Uh, Madison?
Yes, so this would allow us to, um, get the remaining meters we need to allow for new customers or upgrades during shut-offs to get us through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, uh, I'll bring it back to Council Raymond for questions.
Okay, so this is only for new meters and, and upgrades. What about for, are, are we moving forward with grants or anything to try to, to bring up the rest of the city to where it needs to be?
Yes, sir. Uh, and we need to, uh, work to get better understanding of some of those additional revenue sources, the impact fees, new developments, so that we can put together a plan for what that looks like for the city through 2025.
Okay.
Okay. Council, do you have any other questions on item three? Do we have any members of public this time wanna come up on item three? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back for council's direction on three.
You good with that? I'll go ahead and make a motion then on number three to, um, accept staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Motion by Vera, second by Kale?
Raymond?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four, rejecting all builds, bids to construct Veterans Park Water Playground Project, making certain findings and authorizing the city manager to deliver the project by a combination of using city forces, amending an existing contract, waiving the formal procurement process to negotiate and enter into a general construction contract. Uh, Lori, city manager Waterman?
So this one, actually, Greg Thompson is on, and he's going to take this one. We are asking at this time to reject the bids that we received, and I'll let him take it from here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you for your consideration of this item. And Mayor, as you've written and as Lori has alluded, what staff is recommending at this time, after, on the 24th of February, council's direction to open the bid, the formal bidding process, staff received only one response to that open bid call. We received it, the, uh, the bid amount was attached to your staff report. It caused the staff and, um, and the city manager to go back and reevaluate the project. Uh, and after, um, extended dialogue with the city attorney, we felt it was the best, most fiscally responsible thing for us to do is to reject all bids and reevaluate the project under provisions of the Public Contract Code. And with exist, existing city forces, we feel that we can bring it back into a figure that better and more closely resembles what council authorized in the first place. So what we're suggesting is basically taking the project apart and some of its components and tackling those each at a time. Public Works has, uh, been very responsive to our requests and allowing us to reevaluate, potentially amending an existing contract that the city has with a service provider to get some of the larger chunks of this done more timely and more fiscally responsible. Uh, basically, the, the staff report outlines this in greater detail. Uh, city attorney can actually tell you what portion of the public contract code that we're relying on here, which is additionally one of the findings that we will be asking the city council to make. And you're, up for your consideration this evening is a resolution that will, um, will showcase most of these items, or most of the content.
Okay, let me bring, uh, to the council for comments. Raymond?
If it's gonna save money to do in-house, then it's the way it would go.
Is that correct? Um, Thompson, Councilman Raymond was asking, we're potentially gonna save a lot of money on this, and he would support that. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, yes, substantial amount of money, close into the, if, if our figures are closely watched, we're, we're expecting potentially savings of upwards around $200,000.
Wow, okay. Uh, Kale, you have any comments?
I, I have a big fear that this is gonna set a precedent that maybe our guys can do a lot more than we're asking them to, and I, I'm concerned, can they do that? I guess Madison should answer that question. Are they, are they capable of doing the majority of this under, under the plan?
I believe so, yes. Uh, it's, it, it's not an unreasonable ask, and there's definitely been joint support with engineering and planning and understanding, um, what, what the limit or what the true extent is of what our public works staff can, uh, commit to and what would require additional, um, services or professional services.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Vera?
Um, well, I did have a discussion earlier in the day with the same concerns, and, uh, but I think we give it a try with the extensive amount of money. Um, the one bid that came in just would take the project and kill it. So if it's something I think we can put together, then I say push it forward.
Okay. Ambrose?
So my only concern is, will this project still be completed by the summer?
The, uh, the, the target date has, has always been, uh, at least to my understanding, is to be able to get this facility up and running by the summer. And we still have a, a great opportunity to meet that deadline. The only thing that would interfere with that target date would be the release or the, uh, the, the shipping of the equipment that we've already ordered from the manufacturer, which we have been informed that there will be some delays due to the COVID-19, um, experience that all of us are, or that we're all going through right now. But, um, the estimates that we received from them would be that the equipment would still be, would be shipped in April and May. So absolutely, with the current estimates, we would be able to intercept that timeline.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wanna step forward and ask a comment at this time? Do we have speaker cards in this?
All right, Rich Miller, 334 Silver Drive, here in Atwater, also Pastor Victory Baptist Church, 1280 Sierra Vista Street. Just a couple of questions. Don't know if you can answer them, or if you would like to answer them as a council, but... So I pulled up the packet, and it says here that the one bid was for $497,000. I'm just trying to understand all the numbers. Uh, I thought I remembered the number $2 million being put out, as far as that's what we had in the account. So I'm trying to figure out, if you can help connect the dots for me, I'm trying to figure out how a $497,000 bid would kill the project. And then, I'm all for saving money, um, but I'm wondering once again, have we thought about, is this the right time to do it, or, or should we wait, especially with what's going on with COVID-19? And is there a deadline where we have to spend this money? Because I've heard that if we don't spend it, we lose it at some point. So, um, I know this is an optimistic thing, this is a positive thing to do. I'm just trying to connect all the dots because I wanna save money, uh, but I hear some caution up here, and I would agree with the caution. Um, and, and I'm just wondering if you can help connect some of those dots for me, possibly.
Thank you. I think, uh, city manager Waterman can, or possibly Thompson can answer that.
I can, I can chime in, Mayor, if you'd like.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Mr. Miller. I, I appreciate your question, and they're valid and legitimate questions. The 497 that we're talking about, that's excluding the equipment that was already purchased, and Greg will have to give me the final numbers on that, but I wanna say it was upwards in between $200,000 and $300,000 for the equipment itself, which pushed the project way up. Um, the $2 million that you were talking about is in park impact fees, but that was not allocated to this one particular project. That's for all projects that would encompass. We originally had set, or discussed a $200,000 threshold until we realized that the state had put some requirements and restrictions on, uh, the water recycling, and that was a costly expense, so it did push the project up a little bit. Um, I would, um, I, I understand and appreciate the concern during this, um, COVID, um, issue, but I think, um, the, the community is gonna be looking for a positive when we come out of this, and we will come out of this stronger, and I think this'll be a good, uh, uh, project for our residents to help celebrate that.
Also, can you, uh, maybe Greg can elaborate, uh, about timing also, that with the, the one source we were using, it could potentially not even happen this year with delays? And by bringing a few things in-house and then piecing out the project, as Greg described, saves us some money and also, uh, makes it more timely. So it's, it's kind of a perfect storm to, to try to execute this. Now, am I on track on that, Greg?
Uh, y- yes, Mayor. Um, so there were two goals that the city manager gave us after we received the bid and had some internal discussion. The first was cost savings to, because as, as Lori had alluded to, the cost of the contractor is broken out from the equipment we have already purchased. So we already have that equipment, and, and obviously that's, that's in process and on its way. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna take a hit with something happening to that equipment. We wanna put it to good use, as well as cost assignments to some of our work. But the cost savings was a portion of it. By bringing the project back under the control of the city, we also have better control of the timing. The more opportunities that we have to tackle with different assignments within the project, the more control the city has to be, you know, in control of their own destiny, so to speak.
Okay. Council, do you have any more questions? What's your direction, council? Vera?
Um, I had pushed the button, but I think Lori did answer the one question about the $2 million. That's an approximate fund balance, which, um, wasn't all allocated for this project. Um, but I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
And just to be clear, and just to be clear to the council, um, the staff recommendation actions are all, are all, um, accurate as listed on the agenda, but, um, all of these actions will be taken place by adopting the resolution that I think the council has, um, now received. So, uh, just wanted to make that clear as a, um, as a, as part of the action, it's actually adopting the resolution which makes those, um, actions.
Okay.
So do I need to, on that motion, I guess, mention staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 3142-20?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Vera, second by Raymond?
Vera?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On the, regarding the consent calendar, all comments that were received will be part of the record for official notification of that. Funding and budget matters, item number five. Accepting the City of Atwater's audit financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 and related reports. Waterman?
So Mayor, we have Kelly Jacobs Hunter online as well as our, as our finance director, as well as Joseph Arch, who is actually with JJACPA, and he'll make the presentation for you tonight.
Okay. Will there be an overhead or just a verbal presentation?
Just a verbal presentation.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, this year for June 30, 2019, are, the audited financial statements are presented for you to receive and file as, um, indicated in the item on the agenda. Um, I'm just gonna cover a brief summary of the report, and I'm basically here if you have any questions or, uh, comments. So the audited financial statements received, an unmodified audit report, again, for this year. Um, the, uh, uh, statement of schedules and findings was still the same comment that has appeared in the prior year. Um, schedule findings regarding the general fund deficit, and, um, this is the first year that the general fund actually didn't have a deficit, so that's one of the, um, uh, highlights for June 30, 2019. Uh, primary reason for that turnaround is a reduction in expenditures as compared to budget by approximately $2 million, and, uh, revenues coming in over, uh, budget estimates of approximately $300,000. So, um, so yeah, it's positive increase in fund balance of $2 million for the year. Um, other than that, the only other thing of note was one, um, $150,000 transfer from the water fund for expenditures that were performed by, uh, General Fund, uh, Program Services. So, uh, that was primarily just to reimburse the general fund for the expenditures that were, uh, completed for, uh, water fund servicing. Other than that, there's nothing really to talk about in terms of, uh, changes from the prior year. There was an adjustment made for the debt refunding for the 2018 A refunding that occurred in April of 2018. Um, and that was, uh, primarily because the, um, uh, city's fiscal agent accounts remained on the books that year-end and should have been, um, adjusted out against the economic error account that was, uh, presented for the refunding. Um, other than that, there's, you know, from year to year, uh, the changes were, were pretty similar, um, from one year to the next. Uh, no new accounting pronouncements were required to be, uh, implemented for the year. Um, and, uh, depending upon how things roll out for this year, I'm anticipating that the general fund will end up in a, continue to end up in a positive position, um, going forward. The, uh, uh, requirement for the finding to be eliminated is three years of positive fund balance. If anybody has any questions, I'm available to answer them now.
Uh, I'll bring it back to the council before I open it to public comment. Kale, you have anything? Ambrose? Raymond? Vera?
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it to public comment. Any members of the public would like to come forward on this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, close of public comment. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation is presented.
Check in.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale. Call for question?
Kale?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Reports and presentations from staff, now item number six, making the environmental finding, waiving the formal procurement process and approving purchase agreement for the replacement of carbon media at well 15. That'd be... That'd be Superintendent.
Mayor, that's also going to be Superintendent Madison.
Go ahead, Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We have staff's recommendation to approve. The recommendation is presented. Our, we did the replacement for well 15 in May of 2019, and it's currently at 75% with the filters at 75%, which means we are required to replace it. The recommendation is to replace it using Calgon, which is the most cost-effective. And also to better determine if this filter will last at least a year, whereas the previous filters from Evoca didn't even last the year that's recommended. To try Calgon as the more cost-effective option and to better see if it fits our needs.
Okay. I'll open it to members of the public at this time. Anyone from the public would like to come forward on this item? Please come to the podium and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Counsel, any questions?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation is presented. Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Ambry. Call for a question.
Vera?
Yep.
Cale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambry?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item seven, verbal update regarding the city's impacted well sites. Superintendent.
Yes. So as you guys may or may not be aware, there are a variety of different options when it comes to procurement. And so the, the staff is currently looking at an option for a progressive design build versus some of the other types of design builds. This would allow us, different from a traditional bid process, this would allow us a more cost-effective and efficient process for meeting our needs as they're specific to our impacted sites, as well as allow the city to be more involved with the professional services agreement and the types of design. We currently have Provost and Pritchard doing work at well 20. And then staff is obviously working to develop this RFP in assistance with Provost and Pritchard.
Okay. Just a verbal update. Does anybody from the public have any comments at this time on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, close it, bring it back to the council. Any questions? Thank you, Madison.
Thank you.
Item number eight, city manager reports and updates. Approving professional services agreement for city attorney legal services with Myers-Navey, Ryback, Silver, and Wilson. That's a lot of names.
I'm going to, excuse me, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're going to recuse yourself, city attorney?
Yep. From this item.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Mayor and city council. This is a little unusual and different, so thank you for letting me present via website. Before you is an agreement between Myers-Navey. On March 9, city council selected the firm of Myers-Navey to provide city legal services to the city of Atwater and authorized myself to negotiate and enter into a contract with Myers-Navey. And before you is a professional services contract with Myers-Navey for legal services in Sacramento. And I'm asking that you approve this contract, as well as appoint Frank Splendario as the city attorney and authorize and direct the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any members of the public would like to come forward at this time on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the council. Raymond?
Yeah, I think Frank Splendario and Myers-Navey have been doing a great job. So I motion to approve this item is presented.
Second. Motion by Raymond, second by Creighton.
Ambry?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, ratifying deputy city manager and community development director employment agreements.
Okay, can we check real quick? I'm sorry, can we check and get?
Bring Frank back?
Frank back on the line?
Can you text him and see if he can come back online?
Yep.
Just let us know when he's back on.
Okay, I'm back on, I'm back online.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you again, Mayor and city council. Before you is, item number nine is to approve the employment contracts of Gina Del Real and Greg Thompson as step four in the agenda packet.
Okay. Any members of the public would like to come forward on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Do we have any comment cards?
I do have two emails that were sent in regarding comments, two emails from two different people opposing contracts for city employees.
Okay, those will be entered into the record? Okay. So the salary and benefit package scheduled for this position were previously, recently approved by the council. So this item was expected to come back to us. The recommendation is to approve the contract for Gina for step one on the salary schedule of deputy city manager in the salary amount of $129,315.18. Also, to approve the contract for Greg Thompson, step four, on the city's schedule of community development director in the salary amount of $115,501.15. Council, comment or motion? Vera?
So I just kind of wanted to comment really quick on the employment agreement with Gina Del Real. Am I saying that right? I'm so sorry.
Del Real.
Okay. So I know before, when we voted on this, then there was a lot of controversy that we were handing out $80,000 raises to city employees. And I was getting emails and phone calls, and I guess there was some Facebook controversy over it. So knowing a little bit about how to figure income, I went back and took this based on what she's making. And it is a $1,820 a year raise. That's not a month or a week. That covers a year to pay for this position. So it's nowhere near an $80,000 raise. I also did a little research. There are quite a few communities in our, in our area that do have deputy city managers. I know this was something that was also looked at a couple of years ago. I think in what we're dealing with right now with the virus, let's stop and take a look at this. Say, for instance, for the next 30 days or two weeks or whatever, we do have a city manager who is quarantined and can't come to work. I'm not saying that is happening now, but what if that were to happen? What if something were to happen that Lori was in a car accident or had to leave town? Who's going to take over that duty? And they're certainly not going to do it for free. As the city grows and we begin to move forward and take on responsibility, I think it is good to have a second-in-command who is well-versed in what we're doing and has been at the city a long time. I've looked through the agreement, and I'm going to just be really out there and say I know that some of the employment agreements in the past have had some controversy behind them and rumor and speculation. This contract appears to be very standard, like all other contracts that we're doing. I don't see anything weird or suspicious hiding anything. It's out there for everybody to look at. Everything seems to be in order. And like I said, I think it's smart that we have backup plan. And I think right now in this time, we're kind of learning that. I just kind of wanted to chime in with phone calls of an $80,000 raise, and that is not the case. I just had my calculator out and double-checked it. Also, this was something that was on the agenda. So if you feel really strongly about it, I would encourage people with very passionate opinions to reach out directly to us so that the information can be delivered correctly and not just be, you know, thrown out there to kind of freak everybody out about. So I just wanted to make that comment and let you know.
Same duties plus assistant city manager.
Correct. She's going to be holding two roles. And actually, something that she's already doing now, if we hire a deputy city manager just on its own, it's definitely going to cost us a lot more than $1,820 a year. So that's just my opinion on that. I think before we vote, does she need to step outside?
I don't think so, because the contract is already between the city. Frank, just a question. Should the employee be in the room where we're discussing this? Kind of late for that now, but this was already dealt with with the city manager. Now we're just ratifying what the city manager already did, right?
Right.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's necessary for her.
Okay. So those were great questions by Councilman Vera. The last one was important. Everybody knows that same duties plus more responsibilities on her shoulders. That's somebody stepping up, raising her hand, and taking on more tasks, more responsibility is always a good thing. I think it's a commitment back to the city and the community. Somebody willing to do that, that's pretty awesome. Any other council members have any questions or comment?
Yeah, I know initially I voted against this position. But I've seen an increase in productivity since it was been put in place. And from what I understand, it's about a $70 net increase per check. So to me, I think, I think it's worth it. I think Gina's been doing a great job in this position, so that's all I have. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the item that's presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by Raymond, second by Vera?
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Ambry?
With the timing of this being so close after our stay-at-home order, I'm going to vote no.
Comments from the public?
Do I, is there a way to get that paper back?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Can you pass that back, John?
I needed to read something on that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, any person may comment on the item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however is not required. Action will not be taken on the item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, we refer to staff and place on a future agenda. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Again, like I'd stated earlier, we do have two emails that were received as we stated on the information that was on the top of the agenda regarding COVID-19, that you were able to submit your comments to the cityinfo@atwater.org. We did receive two emails to that email prior to the 5:00 p.m. deadline. And we had already stated two of the comments that came in opposition. Also, there was an opposition for the splash pad. I apologize, I didn't mention that when we were talking in regards to that, as well as the contract change from Equova to Calgon. So those are the other two items that were talked about as well.
Okay. Those will be entered into the record.
Correct. And then we also have one speaker card for Lori Johnson.
Mayor and city council. Tonight is, Lori Johnson, 1675 Drakely Avenue. Tonight, as I stand in front of this dais once again, I can barely contain my emotions as I reflect on all the hardships that I have been through. The crimes that have been committed against us so blatantly, it almost seems unreal, but real it is. Real damage has been done to us. I fear that some will not be able to be undone. There has been so much you could never imagine unless you lived it. I never thought that I would ever have to defend myself due to false police reports and fight for a community unwilling to fight for me. I ask you to be honest with yourselves and think about what we have been through. All the misconduct, all the damage done by the fake news media, and how the crimes that the city has done, has committed against us. Now think that those crimes turned your family against you. Now dealing with the city targeting you, now isolated from your family. You're all alone. But I know his journey for me will make me whole again. So I, so I continue on the journey. So standing up, so standing up against a force so evil and unjust with all the faith in the world that our God is just, He will see that justice will be served. I am very patient, and I know His justice will be, will be good for me. But not everyone will enjoy the justice that He has for them. Thank you.
Any other members of the public would like to come forward at this time? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Once again, Rich Miller, pastor of Victory Baptist Church, 1280 Sierra Vista Street here in Atwater. I just wanted to, I have a plan on talking, but I did want to mention that with everything going on, COVID-19, our church has been putting out little door hangers, not going around in the community, but as we've visited elderly in our church to check on them, that just say something, something as simple as you are important to us. And I hope that everybody in the community knows how important they are to the faith-based community. And I know I speak for a number of pastors tonight when I say that if we can do anything to help people in the community, elderly folks who need groceries picked up or anything, that we're here for that. And, or at least, I guess I can speak for myself. I can't maybe speak for all of them, but I believe all the pastors are behind me when I say that. And so I just want to make sure that everybody is reminded that this is a perfect time for us as a community, even though we're isolated, to come together in a sense by supporting one another. And so please know that the faith-based community is behind the rest of the community, and that if we can do anything to help, tell us know.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. City council members' comments. Would you like to go first? Ambry?
So I guess I'm in the doghouse this week since I'm first?
I was trying not to pick anybody.
You're learning, Danny. Right off the bat, I just want to say the reason why I voted no on the last item there, again, it's, we are, this is the first meeting right after our stay-at-home order. And I believe at least my constituents would at least like to be here to voice their opinions. Not saying that you guys don't deserve the raise, but I definitely want to hear from the residents. Also, I want to say thank you all to everyone who works at the grocery stores, any truck drivers, any farmers right now, anyone who's pretty much out there busting their tails in order to make sure that the rest of us are taken care of, especially in school districts, from your custodians to your cafeteria workers, to maintenance groups as well. Bless you guys all, and I hope you guys are all being treated well. Families, please take this seriously, especially with the case that we, that just got confirmed in Merced County. Just be safe out there. That's it.
Raymond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, touch on what Councilman Ambry said, and you know, I echo the sentiments. I thank everybody out there that's working hard, or, you know, EMS, everything. They're still going strong. And I also want to touch on what Pastor Miller was saying. I've been working with Pastor Miller, Pastor Daniel Sarmiento, Pastor Alfred Perez, Andrew Cantrell. And we're working on a day of prayer for our community, county, state. And there, the faith-based community, as Pastor Miller said, is very much behind us. And it's times like these where our communities come together and we thrive. And it's also the time where Christ light shines. Whenever it's dark, Christ light's going to come in, and it's going to illuminate where we need to go and mark our steps. need to go and mark our steps. So, I just wanna thank you guys for being with us, and look forward to getting that event coordinated and going.
Thank you, Vera.
Gosh, very well said, Brian. Um, yeah, again, I'll just kind of bounce off what the other gentleman had just said. We do have a governor ordered stay-at-home. That doesn't mean everybody's out running around. It kind of almost appears, you know, when you, when you go to work or you come home, for us that are still required to go to work, kind of almost business as usual, and I know that there had been some comments heard earlier, well, no one's sick in Atwater. There are sick people in Atwater, just because they haven't tested, that doesn't mean that there aren't sick people here. I myself believe that it can very easily rear its head at any moment, but we wanna go ahead and take that precaution to make sure that we don't spread it, that we don't have this hit our city, and there's just been a lot of precaution to make sure that our citizens are safe. So, you know, you might be feeling well, but at any given moment, you don't know when you come into contact, and then you take that home to your children and your neighbors and the people you come in contact with. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to all the citizens of our city. As the council and as the city leaders, we're doing everything we can to take precautions if the worst-case scenario hits, but also trying to ensure that everybody does stay safe and healthy. And then also, thoughts and prayers to our law enforcement, to our nurses, to our doctors, to our EMS, to our firefighters. It doesn't matter if there's a stay-at-home order, our first responders have to work no matter what. So, no matter what happens, they're out there to protect us and take care of us, so lots of thoughts and prayers to those people as well, and that's pretty much it.
Yep.
Well, tonight, sitting in this chair, I feel kinda short on words, but I would like to say that a special thank you to our city staff. These guys are working diligently to make sure the staff, that everything is, the city is running away, so thank you guys very much. Thank you, the police department for keeping us all safe, and enjoy this time with your family now. I, I am sitting at home and enjoying the time of my life, and wish I could be with my grandchildren, but of course, we can't get all together. Somebody, I saw somebody say, this is a great time for my kids to make a fort in the house, and we should allow them to do that. I would love to do that with my grandchildren right now, but you know what? For the safety of them, for the safety of our family, we can't do that. So, please, make sure you realize that this is a very real situation that could be damaging to a lot of people. So, God bless y'all.
Thank you. Also, wanted to let people know that for updates, you still go to the county. The county's leading this, it's a public health emergency that we're dealing with. Go there, get your answers. If you need help, reach out to us on the council, we'll help you get the answers you need. Also, Wednesday, this Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I'll be in a conference call with the White House at one PM with other mayors, Mayor Murphy and Walda and Grapal Samra and a few other mayors. So, we're getting, as mayors and council members, we're getting updates directly from the White House. They are taking this very seriously. Our police department's got things under control here in town. Please take it serious, it's a time to listen and do your part as a citizen of Atwater and contribute the best you can. I know you have to go out there and get milk and butter and bread, and some of you have to go to work because you have essential duties, but as John said earlier, I don't know how cutting-edge you are, but you're pretty cutting-edge. My son is Skyping or whatever the video technology stuff. My living room's been turned into a fort, and the PVC and all the PVC pipes, I have to fix my sprinkler systems, been cut up and made into a giant fort in the living room, which is kinda cool, but it's a, it's a good time to be together, smelling the baking going on in the kitchen with the wife, and it's a great family opportunity. I just wish the internet would go down, and then these things would be no good anymore, so we could just focus on us being a family and, you know, read the Bible, spend some prayer time, and pray for those that are sick right now that need help. And we're still looking for volunteers, we're gonna be assembling volunteers that, you know, maybe you got a skill in nursing or medical, or you're good at cooking and you can help us deliver stuff. If we ever get to a spot where we need those, feel free to reach out to our police chief or our fire chief, let them know that you'd like to be a community volunteer in case the situation gets worse. I think we're doing pretty good. We're a rural community, I would say in general, most of the people are following the rules, and those that aren't, maybe they just need to be educated, but I think that we're all pretty smart, and we can follow rules here in Atwater quite well. So, as Raymond said, I appreciate what everybody's doing there. Also, Gina, thanks for stepping up, and Greg, I know you're not here, welcome aboard, and Frank, welcome aboard, and that's all we have. Oh, also, I wanna close tonight's prayer out. Councilwoman Vera came up with this idea, we're gonna close tonight's meeting with a prayer, so Pastor, if you don't mind coming up, you guys don't mind standing?
Could I, real quickly before I pray, could I just read one verse?
Take your time.
Okay. This is one verse from the Bible that I've been trying to encourage the people of our church with, it's Second Timothy one seven, that says, "For God hath not given us the spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind." The Bible teaches us that God doesn't want us to be afraid, and I know that there are people right now that might be afraid, especially with the stay-at-home order and with everything that we're hearing on the news and through social media, but God wants us to have a spirit of power, be strengthened, of love, be compassionate, and of a sound mind to keep our senses, and remember that he's still in control. So, let's pray to him. Father, thank you for your goodness to us, and Father, even in times like this, we know that you are good, because you're always good. And Father, we are so thankful that you have given us the families that you have blessed us with, we are so thankful that we do have some extra time with them right now. Father, we pray for these families that have been affected, we pray for your healing hand to be upon them. Father, for those that have lost a loved one through this, we pray for your comfort to be upon them. And Lord, we do just pray that you use this time to strengthen us, as your word says, to cause us to be compassionate for our neighbors. Father, for us to be of sound mind and to be focused mentally on what's important in life, which is the relationships that we have. Thank you once again for this council, for the wisdom you've given them tonight, and for all the staff and all their hard work. Thank you for our firefighters, our police officers, and all the work that they do. Now, we just ask that you dismiss us with your blessing. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Anything close?